Yes, my lord. Well, may I just say a little further about the point I was making for the shorter German, then I'll move on to the 1976 Act. And, my lord, we say that the consequence of the appellant's argument on section 56.1 is that the protection provided to the consumer, hiree, is entirely dependent on the choice made by the operator. Where an operator chooses to accept the booking and then undertake that as a principle, contract for hire will come into existence very shortly thereafter, and the consumer stroke hiree is protected. But where the operator chooses not to do so, but to operate a purported agency model, then no contract for hire may arise until the driver arrives at the door of the hiree, and indeed will not arise at all if the driver does not arrive. That is a startling conclusion within an act where the intention is one of protection of the public, the public's safety. It promotes nothing. And can I take the court to paragraph 30 of the decision in Uber London Limited just on this point? I'll go back to that decision later, but just to flag on this point. It's within the authorities' bundle, tab 18, page 371, paragraph 30. And it's the paragraph where the court is considering, even though the Act contemplates a contract, it doesn't mean it requires. And the court concluded it did require. And in paragraph 30 on page 371, just below us at C, the court says, "To interpret the Act in this way gives effect on statutory purpose in ensuring public safety. As Mr Galbraith Martin pointed out, passengers booking vehicles, journeys on these acts may be vulnerable. The journeys may be booked late at night. The consequences of a driver failing to turn up may be serious. If the passengers-only contractual relationship with the driver, he or she has never heard of, and who is in any event unlikely worth claiming against, any claim is likely practically worthless. Conversely, if the obligation must be undertaken by the operator, the operator will have a powerful incentive to ensure the drivers it uses are reliable, and if something goes wrong, a remedy against the operator is likely to be worthwhile." And we say the same point applies here in terms of when that contract for hire arises.
Yes, I mean, it depends in part, I suppose, on what you think ensuring public safety is about.
Yes.
And on the appellant's construction, public safety is about ensuring the safety of a passenger being carried in a vehicle.
Yes. And we say-
Not a passenger waiting for a vehicle.
Yes, what we say is broader than that. It includes consumer protection. It's clearly what the divisional court had in mind here.
Yeah.
The two go hand in hand. And, my lord, just finally on this point, it is instructed briefly to look at Vizu's rider conditions.
Before we do that, in terms of protecting the passenger, I understand the commercial union may be very disappointed. We've all been there. Taxi doesn't turn up to take you to-
Yes.
-the hospital or the airport. But, well, I suppose you'd say, wouldn't there be criminal liability if they did something different, which is to send a vehicle which wasn't licensed or where the driver wasn't licensed?
Yes.
But you would say they wouldn't be operating? Well, they would be operating any vehicle, the private hire vehicle.
They would be operating.
Because if they were inviting bookings and were dispatching vehicles as a consequence of that, whether or not there was any contract, and there'd be a deemed contract at some stage, there would still be criminal liability if they sent a rogue driver.
My lord, that's right. That's right. But that would be criminal liability, therefore to be enforced by the licensing authority.
Yeah.
It wouldn't give any right of action, of course, for the hiree.
So the only area of non-protection, you say, is the period of time between the booking and the contract being formed if on the fact it's not made at the same time as the booking being accepted.
Well, my lord, that's the first point. And when one is operating a purported agency model, there will always be a gap. And it may be only when the vehicle arrives. But we also preen aid the difficulties then in working out what are the obligations owed by the operator of the contract to which they are deemed to be a party.
Why is that difficult?
Because where one has, if one has written terms between the driver and the hiree, one then has to work out which of those, how does that contract apply to the operator?
Well, it's deemed to be made with the operator. Whatever the terms are in that contract, every contract for a private hire, as set out of 56, is deemed to be made. It doesn't create a new contract.
No.
It provides the identity of any contracting party.
Yes.
So any breach by the driver equals a breach by the operator?
Well, I'm not clear, I have to say, on what the appellant's case is about, if every obligation, every written obligation, is an obligation of the operator as well. That still gives rise to difficulty-
It doesn't matter. We're not concerned with what the appellant's saying. We're obviously concerned at one level.
Yes.
We're concerned with the Act, and they might, unlikely, but they might have got it wrong. And if they've got it wrong, isn't the position that there is a contract for hire something to the gap point? And if it is actually one that was made in fact between the driver and the passenger, not the hiree and the office, then whatever the terms of that contract is, that contract is to be treated as a contract with the operator.
Well, my lord, of course, on that analysis, the contract is treated. But our concern is the individual rights and obligations under that contract, are they all necessarily owed by the operator? Even if, for example, it's about not playing music, or I want to play music in my car? The driver may have any sort of silly condition. Does that bind the operator? And if I'm not-
The answer is obviously yes, since the operator is part of that contract which contains an obligation either to play or not to play music in the car.
Oh, my lord. Those are my submissions on that issue.
Yeah.
Our principal point is the gap.
I see the gap.
Yeah.
I see the gap point, yeah.
Can I then turn to the 1976 Act? And it is common ground that, as established by the authorities, its purpose is to protect members of the public. And we provided with you in the bundle, the case of St Ormond's and Taylor, where Lord Justice Russell said the underlying purpose of the Act is clear, is to provide protection to members of the public who wish to be conveyed as passengers in a motorcar provided by a private hire organization with a driver. And in terms of the definition of operate, may I take you to section 80, please? It's in the page 138 of the authorities' bundle. And we have the definition of operate, and we also have a definition of private hire vehicle just below it. And so if one reads into the definition of operate, the definition of private hire vehicle, that becomes, "In the course of business, to make provision for the invitation or acceptance of bookings for a motor vehicle constructed or adapted to seat fewer than nine passengers, which is provided for hire with the services of the driver for purposes of carrying passengers." And this is clearly a term of art. There has been a discussion in the case law about whether it is a very narrow definition or a very wide definition. We've provided one authority where Mr Justice Buxton said it was a very wide definition. The appellant's have provided others. Perhaps that doesn't matter. The fact is, it is a term of art, which is to be determined in accordance with its wording. And we make three points about the definition. Firstly, the reference to provided for hire, together with the requirement, "This is all in the course of business," has obvious contractual connotations. Secondly, in this definition, the driver is secondary to the vehicle in the definition of private hire vehicle. It is the vehicle that is provided for hire. The driver is simply the person whose services are provided along with the vehicle in question. And we say there is no sense from this definition, so far as it goes, that the contract for hire that would arise ultimately following acceptance is or may be with the driver, whose services are provided along with the vehicle. We say the judge was right when she concluded that the function of the driver is comprehended in what is supplied by the operator. That's paragraph 65 Roman I. And the third point we make about the definition is that although it talks about making provision for the invitation or acceptance of bookings, it also includes acceptance as well.
No, it includes provision for acceptance.
My lord, yes. But it also, we say, it is implicit in the definition that it includes the acceptance of the booking, which is what the judge held and against which there is no ground of appeal. My lord, the judge held that, I'll give you the paragraph references, paragraph 73, 65 Roman II, Roman IV-
Hang on a minute.
Sorry.
73?
73, 65 Roman II, Roman IV, Roman VII, and 66. And that was in a context where in the court below, Vizu's case was that the proprietor or the driver could accept the booking. The reference for that, my lord, is supplemental bundle, page 90, paragraphs 16 to 28. Whereas Delta's case was that acceptance of a booking is not a licensable activity under the 1976 Act. And the reference for their skeleton argument is supplemental bundle, page 83, paragraph 44. I. But during the course of my submissions, I will point the court to a number of sections in the Act that are only consistent with the acceptance of the booking being something that is only capable of being done by the operator. My lord, the next point is to consider briefly the interlocking elements of the scheme of Part II of the 76 Act. And we say there are four of them, and the friend of Sir Colvin has dealt with them, I'll deal with them shortly. There is firstly the triple licensing requirement. That is, that there must be a license in place for the operator, the vehicle, and the driver, so-called trinity of licenses, all of which must be issued by the same licensing authority. The second element is the pre-licensed requirements. That is, what an authority must be satisfied of before it may grant a license. So, for example, a vehicle must be suitable and safe and have insurance. A driver must be fit and proper, and so too must an operator be fit and proper. And then the third interlocking element, just spend a little more time on, are the regulatory obligations owed. And I will focus on the obligation for the operator. And for those purposes, can I ask you to turn up to section 56 on page 155 of the authorities' bundle? And the obligations are sections 56.2 and 3. And each of them contain both substantive obligations and also procedural ones, such as production of information to the local authority and the police. And they both contemplate the conditions that may be prescribed by the local authority. And there is criminalization under section 56.5. But it is, however, worth noting at this point that there is no criminal offence under the 1976 Act of failing to comply with a condition.
I missed that, sorry.
My lord, there is no, non-compliance with the condition does not amount to criminal offence under either this Act or indeed the 1998 Act. But of course, it can be taken into account in terms of revocation or renewal of licence.
May I just ask you a question, please, Mr Bose, about section 56? As I understand your case, the Act imposes an implied requirement on an operator to make a contract. Is that right?
Yeah. It both contemplates a contract for hire will arise following acceptance, and reasons of public safety requires it to be with the operator.
Yeah. So does that implication arise from the terms of section 56?
Well, my lady, it does not. I make my submissions on both contemplation and requirement, if I may-
Well, I don't want to take you out of-
I'm grateful. But I have the point well in mind. I'm dealing firstly with sections 56.2 and 3.
Can I just ask you about that? If you fail to comply with a condition which prescribes the records that you need to keep, why are you not guilty of a criminal offence? Why haven't you contravened the provisions of the section, since your obligation under the section is to comply with conditions?
My lord, I'm terribly sorry, my lady, that's absolutely right. Where there are conditions which relate to this legal obligation, non-compliance would be a criminal offence. But there may be any other matters that the authority can impose as a condition, and there is no freestanding criminal provision. But my lord is quite right, I apologize.
And again, 56.2 is interesting because it says what you have to keep is particulars of every booking. It's switched from the language of contract for hire in 56 to particulars of a booking, invited or accepted by him.
Yes.
So if they've got a telephone number saying, "Book plycabs here," and you've got that as somebody rings up, they must make a record of that, whether there's a contract or not, it seems.
My lord, that's right. The obligations under sections 56.2 and 3 apply to the person who has a license under section 55, either operator.
Yeah.
They are quite distinct from any matters of contract. And so if one looks at first at section 55.2, that provides that particulars of every booking shall be kept by way of a record in such form as be prescribed. And that is to be of every booking of a private hire vehicle invited or accepted by him, whether accepting the same for the hiree or by undertaking it at the request of another operator. And so it contemplates firstly the informal subcontracting that was permissible under the Act. One has acceptance of a booking, then if operator one doesn't have a private hire vehicle to use, it can seek out another operator within the same area who may agree to undertake it at their request. And each of them is required to keep the record.
But it's not limited, forget the subcontractor, it's not limited to bookings invited by him, accepted by him, it's invited or accepted by him.
Yes.
So it's assuming- There's no contract and there's no act for acceptance necessary, it does-
So the Act's recognizing that the acceptance of a booking is a distinct stage?
Yes.
Yes, my lady, that's what I'm driving at, yeah.
Yes, no, I accept that, it is. I think it's common ground, at least, common ground, Mr Colvin and I, that the Act could have been worded far better.
But what it does look at, it looks like, is that this thing is all about acts which needs to be regulated, and it's not to do with legal liability under contract.
Well, these subsections, absolutely, yes, of course. Because they're concerned with the invitation or acceptance of the booking, each of which must necessarily take place before one can possibly have any contract for hire. And another point we made just in passing is that 56.2 refers to, it's only the person licensed under section 55 who could accept the booking. There's no conception that a driver can accept a booking. And then it's also apt to note at this point that the obligation in section 56.2 is replicated in the 1998 Act, and we'll come to it in section 4.3 BC and E. And this is part of our submission, that the 1998 Act is in fact, it operates in the same way as the 76 Act, has the same concepts and the same core provisions. And then, past the section 56.3, this provides that the person to whom a license has been granted shall keep such records as accounts are made by conditions attached to the grant prescribed of the particulars of any private hire vehicle operated by him, also shall produce that record. And as was indicated this morning, that requires the licensed operator to keep a record of its stable, of all motor vehicles provided for hire, and any driver whose services are to be provided with any such vehicle. And these, of course, are the drivers and the vehicles of whom-
So you've got to keep the drivers' particulars under 56.3?
My lord, yes, because of the definition of private hire vehicle. And private hire vehicle, by defined by section 80, is the vehicle and the driver supplied with it. And it is, it is habitually the case that authorities require operators to keep comprehensive records, firstly of all bookings accepted by them, and also of all vehicles and drivers in their stable. And we have Vizu's, Delta's license in the bundle, which I don't take the court to. And again, the obligation under section 56.3 is important because it is, in substance, the same obligation that a London PHV operator owes under section 4.3D of the 1998 Act. And as we will see, the divisional court relied on that obligation, i.e. to keep records of all vehicles and drivers available to it, as indicating that it is the operator which carries out the booking, i.e. it is the operator who performs the contractual obligation to convey the passenger. And we say that is a reason for concluding that the 1976 Act, as enacted, does contemplate that the contract is with the operator and not anyone else. I accept there is nothing express, but the difficulty is that this Act leaves a lot unsaid. And when we come to the Maxwell Stamp Report, we say that that demonstrates clearly both that it was contemplated, under this scheme, it would be the operator, and only the operator, with whom the contract for hire would be. And 56.1 was intended to deal with the side position where it couldn't provide the vehicle. It would have been far better had it stated everything in terms, but had it done so, we wouldn't have been here. And then finally, in terms of the-
Sorry to interrupt-
My lady, yes.
But the difficulty of that argument is that the only reference Parliament has made to the identity of the contract, the nature of the contract, is in 56.1. That's the only express reference to what's going on contractually. And it seems very odd to say that you can somehow imply from something that isn't stated in the Act that there is nevertheless a requirement to make a contract.
Well, my lady, 56.1 is a deeming provision, obviously.
Yes.
And therefore, one has to, and deeming provisions do give rise to difficulty. And it's necessary, we say, to understand the mischief at which 56.1 is intended to meet. So I accept that it refers to contract, and one may say on a first reading, it supports the appellant's case. Indeed, it's right to note that in ULL, there was no argument at all on the 1976 Act, but one sees, Mr Colvin took you to it, the court there referred to 56.1, saying the point couldn't arise. But this is the first time, respectfully, there has been any detailed argument on what section 56.1 means. So on its face, I can see how it could be said to support the appellant's argument. We say it doesn't.
But I've got a different question, which is, in the light of the presence of that provision in Part II, what scope is there for an implication that there's a requirement to enter into a contract?
My lady, the first point is we say that the Act contemplates there's a contract with operator. And then it is, as it was in London, public safety that requires there to be an operator entering into that contract.
So there are no express words?
No.
So you accept that there are no express words?
No. But nor is there in the 1998 Act.
But there wasn't a deeming provision in the provision of the 1998 Act?
Well, section 5.5, which we'll look at, is a deeming provision. It uses a slightly different form of words, as it says, "For the avoidance of doubt and subject to terms of contract, then certain things follow." But it is also deeming provision that in the absence of contractual terms, the contract for hire is made with the first operator and not the second operator. But I'll come to that in due course, but they do perform the same function, we say.
Whilst we are having difficulties, just for actualist difficulties, I fully understand that the half assumption on the part of Parliament, or the contemplation on the part of Parliament, was this will work in the following way. Somebody will ring up, they'll book, that will be treated as the contractor, as the contractor for the avoidance of doubt as the operator. I fully understand that that's what was assumed, or expected to be the pattern. But if, in fact, it's only a contemplation, and somebody could run the system, using it neutrally, put it neutrally, in other ways, but in ways which met all the regulatory obligations so there wouldn't be offences, which involves looking carefully at when the driver would be operating rather than just turning up and so on, if they could devise another way of carrying out the business without there having to be a contract only with the operator, although with the operator as well, then whilst it may not be a good idea, that's the law, isn't it?
Well, we were submitted not that there is a requirement, that is, operator-
Thus far, where does the requirement come from?
Oh, my lord, I can't point to a statute provision. We do rely upon the same reasoning as employed by the divisional court in Uber London. The fourth element of the scheme is enforcement of regulatory obligations. Again, very briefly, there are the criminal offences that you've been taking to. And then there's also the power to revoke or suspend a license under section 62. Can I then move to subcontracting in inverted commas? Because I accept that under the 1976 Act, that term is not used, and in fact, as has been held, there is no requirement for there to be a formal subcontracting for one operator and a second operator. But section 56.2 recognizes that where an operator has accepted a booking, it may request a second operator to undertake that booking. And so long as that second operator undertakes it with a vehicle and drives a licence by the same authority, that is permissible. And what has been undertaken by the second operator is the booking of the private hire vehicle. And this is one of those cases where this right is not expressly stated within the Act, but there are indications from it in section 56.1 and 2. And that is certainly how it's been interpreted, just to give the court the references, is Mr Justice Dyson in Powers at tab 11, page 262, and Lord Justice Latham in Shanks at page 273, paragraph 27. And so this is a right that's always existed when the Act was passed, but it doesn't appear expressly from it. You have to do some work to find it out. But it's been there. And there is nothing about this right of one operator to pass on the booking to a second operator that requires the agreement or even the knowledge of the hiree. It can simply be done by section 56.1 and 2. And so the hiree may not be any the wiser about it. They may phone their operator of choice, ask for a minicab, and when the vehicle turns up, it's not provided by their operator of choice, but another operator who- but another operator who they've vowed never to use because of problems they've had in the future. So they may be ignorant of it, they may not want it, but the Act permits it. And it's understanding this possible arrangement between two operators that we say is the key to understanding section fifty-six one. Now, because it's a deeming provision, it's clear that the- it can only operate insofar as is necessary to achieve the purpose it is intended to serve and no further. That's the well-known judgment in summa. And we make two points about the wording of fifty-six one before then going to Maxwell Stamp. And the first is that the references in section fifty-six one are to, it says, "Every contract for the hire of a private hire vehicle shall be deemed made with the operator who accepted the booking for that vehicle, whether or not he himself provided that vehicle." And we'd sooner make the point here that the reference to vehicle must mean private hire vehicle, as one sees in the opening wording of fifty-six one. It just doesn't mean the vehicle itself. It is the private hire vehicle, i.e. the vehicle along with the services of the driver. And the second point is that fifty-six one does not have the effect of deeming existence of a contract of hire. What it does is it presupposes there is a contract for hire, and its stated effect is limited to identifying or deeming the identity of the operator to that pre-existing contract of hire. And I'll just briefly explain how we say it operates and then go to Maxwell Stamp, if I may. We say that the Act contemplates that a contract of hire will arise following acceptance of a booking. We say that the Act contemplates that a contract is made between the hireer and the operator who accepted that booking, and that that is with the operator as principal, not as agent for someone else.
And the person who makes the request can be an agent?
Well, yes, they can make it, yes.
So the hotel concierge rings up for a cab for a guest, and that's, he's not contracting personally?
No, but he's, no, that would have to be right. Then the third point, I've already made my submissions, that the Act requires there to be a contract, and we'll come back to that in London. Now, in the majority of cases, the operator will fulfil that contractual obligation for providing the vehicle with the services of the driver itself. In such a case, there is an actual contract, and section fifty-six one is simply not engaged. However, section fifty-six, one and two, as interpreted, permit an arrangement whereby the first operator who has accepted the booking may seek to identify a second operator to provide a driver and vehicle. And we say it is here and here only that section fifty-six one bites. Its effect is that the arrangement between the first and second operators does not change the identity of the party to the contract with the hireer. The contract with the hireer remains with the first operator, whatever the position in private law may be, whether novation or just simple uncertainty about what the contractual position is.
But how is that reconcilable with the express words of fifty-six one? For the purposes of this part of this Act, every contract-
Well, my lady, even on the appellant's argument, every contract for the hire doesn't work because in the, on their interpretation, they accept the operator can contract as principal. Where the operator does do that, there is an actual contract, and section fifty-six one would have no application. So even on their interpretation, it only applies to subset-
Or it's simply superimposed on what's there on ground.
My lady, fifty-six one is not an easy provision. We accept that. But we say that what the, the task of the court is to seek to understand the mischief that it is seeking to deal with, and so long as that is permissible by the wording of it, apply that to it and no further. We say that it is perfectly permissible, indeed correct, on the wording, given this power to subcontract, read it in this way. And then when one comes to Maxwell Stamp, that completes the circle. And by contrast, the argument put forward by the appellant's and the difficulties arising from this critical point about the gap, it's just that can't be the right interpretation.
But if you're right about that, why didn't Parliament use different language? And say that, you know, for the purposes of such arrangements as described in section fifty-six subsection two, where blah, 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 then the contract is deemed to.
Well, my lady, for the same reason that the Act, it's not well drafted. It doesn't make clear that only the operator can accept the booking. And yet that is, that is clear. If a woman looks at the sections, it didn't make clear of the ability of one operator to provide to another operator's provided vehicle. One has to get that from the provisions. And so, I mean, under the nineteen ninety-eight Act, it doesn't provide a requirement.
But you don't say, as I understand it, that section fifty-six one itself requires the operator to enter into a contract with anybody?
No, no.
So we've got to find this obligation somewhere?
Yes.
And you've already told us that you don't say there's any express-
No.
So what are the principles which we should apply in implying a requirement in an act of Parliament? We're more used to doing it in contracts.
Yes, of course.
And if there is a provision in a contract which covers the ground or part of the ground, is that more difficult to imply a term?
Yes.
Does that apply to implying something into an act of Parliament or what?
Well, my dear, with that, my lord, our response would be that it is the similar analysis of that was taken in the London case, that if you're with me, that the Act contemplates there'll be a contract of hire with the operator. That's just the first step. The second distinct step is whether it requires it. And we say that as the purpose of the statute is one of public safety, in order to fulfil that statutory purpose, one implies in a requirement.
But don't you have to, don't you have to submit that this is a matter of necessary implication?
Yes.
So that is your submission?
Yes.
All right.
It's really a question of what the words mean, actually, what Parliament meant. And it's perhaps unhelpful to talk about implication, which makes us think about contract and contract terms. It's what did Parliament intend? And it may well be the Parliament were thinking, gosh, normally you ring up, you make a booking, that amounts to a contract. And it's no good letting some other dodgy company do it for you, you're still liable. But if the words that Parliament have used cover not only that situation, but cover other situations as well, where the contract isn't made at the time of the booking, or alternatively, the words used make it clear that the contract is with the driver, not the operator, then all the words do is fill in that slot, which is that it is always deemed to be with the operator. But it's hard to exclude the possibility of something happening which meets all the regulatory requirements but doesn't involve a contract only with the operator and only at the time that the booking is made. That's the problem. You ought to extend the Act to stop that. And it's not implying, it's finding words in the Act which say Parliament is not allowing this.
Well, I've made my submissions.
You made your submissions, yes.
And we say that the rationale for section fifty-six one, it is a quid pro quo for the first operator being able to undertake the booking by a second operator. In years gone by, you have a number of individual operator drivers running their own individual business. They had a good customer who booked a PHV, they couldn't satisfy it. It enabled them to say to their friend, can you do this one? To maintain business goodwill. And that was the purpose behind it, we say. But the counter to that is that if you seek to do that without the knowledge or consent of the hireer, then your contract remains with the- Can I then go to the Maxwell Stamp Report? It's at tab twenty-two of the Authorities' Bundle.
I'm still a bit puzzled as to how this is a justifiable or legitimate subject to statutory interpretation, which it told stood for evidence, actual context. Did you tell us and ideally give us an authority which says what we can use it for?
Well, my lord, just on that point, the judge, in her judgment, held that section nine of the report suggested a framework that to a large extent, although not entirely, was reproduced from the Act, and that the report constituted the informed basis of the Act. Delta sought permission to appeal against her conclusion on that, and permission was refused. And so our position, respectfully, would be it is not open to Delta to argue. It is not admissible. In order to answer my lord's question, because that's not a very satisfactory answer when I've been asked the question, this was a report of the Departmental Committee on the London Taxi Trade, a committee appointed by the Home Secretary and then presented by him to Parliament. And we get that from the first words of it on page five-two-three.
Yeah, and what's the link with the legislation then?
Well, it is an act. Well, firstly, it's an official report, it was publicly available and would have been in nineteen seventy-six. Its specific remit was on the regulation of the private hire industry in London, I accept. But it was simply unregulated elsewhere in the country. And there is no sense from the report that London was any different in terms of private hire elsewhere. And it made detailed recommendations in section nine, which mirrors to a very high degree those that we find in the nineteen seventy-six Act. And we say that it is a report, in effect, of an advisory committee, to use the words in O, which is plainly admissible, particular in relation to the mischief at which section fifty-six one is dealing.
But I don't understand how we can say that because the, well, anyway. I'll keep my thoughts to my head.
Well, my lady, I'm going to go through parts of the report.
But even if the judge is right and said that this is the framework that's reproduced largely in the Act, where does that get you?
By looking at the specific, the report deals in terms with pre-existing model, problems with agency drivers, the new concept of operator. It is to be the operator who accepts the booking and with whom the contract of hire is made, and then deals in terms with the difficult position of subcontracting, coming up with a solution of a deeming provision. It then goes on in the remainder of paragraph nine to set out in a series of paragraphs the recommendations for the scheme. You can track the vast majority of these, including fifty-six one and other obligating the operator within that. And we say it is manifest that this report was the foundation for the nineteen seventy-six Act, including section fifty-six one. But I'll go to the various paragraphs. So if one goes to page five-hundred-and-thirty, the terms of reference are set out in paragraph one, inquire the operation structure and economy of the taxi cab and private hire car trades in London, consider the respective roles or two services and the carriage of passengers in London, and the statutory controls needed for their safe and efficient performance, and to make recommendations. And then over on paragraph three at the top of it, we naturally saw to ascertain the views of all interested parties, including representatives of the taxi and hire car trades. And we have a list of those individuals at page six-six-one, which I don't take the court to, but which contains a number of private hire organisations that would appear from their names to be of national reach and not London reach. And then, may I take you to paragraph four-point-six-point-two on page five, starting at page five-seven-eight? My dear friend, Mr Colvin, took you to paragraph four-point-six-one. That is structure and personnel. We have that on page five-seven-nine. Well, it's recognised by the authors of the report that the structure of the trade is very complex. And they set out the three basic methods of operation in four-point-six-two. They also provide over the page of some indicative figures as to the use of the agency model within London, both inner and outer. And we see that on page five-eighty, just below the table, where it says, "From this, you'll be seeing that in London as a whole, about a quarter, and in London alone, more than one-third of the firms which apply to agencies." So one can see, and I accept it's a snapshot and just based upon the research they did, but it appears from here that the agency model was the minority model. If one then moves to paragraph four-point-seven-eight on page five-eight-six, here it describes the general operation of owner-drivers working for agencies, and it refers to fees paid for agencies. My friend, Mr Colvin, referred to that as the setup. That's how his client referred to that. So the authors of the report were perfectly aware of this model of operation as being one of the three. And then, in, go to page five-nine-six, paragraph five-point-two-four, dealing with private hire, and it refers to the evidence that has been received from organisations representing what generally class as the consumer interest. If one goes to five lines down, it goes, "Doubts were expressed about the safety of some of the vehicles employed, about the trustworthiness and competence of some drivers, and about lack of proper insurance cover. There was also considerable criticism of the casual methods of operation of some private hire firms, which mainly acted as agents for owner-drivers, resulting in only a tenuous link between the vehicle and driver, which actually served the hireer and the firm from which he made his booking." And so there is evidence in deprecating the practice, at least, of some agency drivers, agency firms. If one then moves to chapter six, this starts at page six-hundred.
Just hold on.
My lord, yes.
There seems to have been a divergence of views recorded in paragraph five-twenty-four, that the police weren't too keen on it. The MOT didn't think that they needed to be anything more. The GLC thought that there was adequate protection. And the purpose, when you were talking about public safety, dealt within five-twenty-five, so that the vehicle is safe and the driver is of good character.
Yes.
That's the, those are the parts of public safety that are concerned.
Yes.
They're concerned. Now, you wanted to just go somewhere else?
My lord, yes. Then on to page six-hundred.
Six-hundred.
Yes, that's the start of chapter six. And then, paragraph six-one says, "Before making recommendations about future arrangements for regulation of taxi and hire car trades in London, we think it desirable that we should display the principles, discuss the principles involved and clear off some misapprehensions which are found unlikely to cause confusion." And then, if one goes to paragraph six-point-two-two, on page six-oh-five, and the authors state, "We think important that regulations for hire car trades should not result in less effective service to the public." So it's conscious that its recommendations need to be proportionate. Then, six-point-two-three, it talks about the essential difference which we envisage between the taxi and the hire car. It will not be law for the driver of a hire car to accept a booking direct, but only through the medium of a registered office, whereas the taxi driver would continue to be entitled to deal direct with the public. It will only be possible to engage a hire car by making a contract for its hire with a responsible operator at a registered office, while the taxi can still be held on the street or engaged." So this is what the authors are proposing under this new scheme, we'll see in section nine, which brings in for the first time this concept of the operator. It will be the operator who makes the contract of hire. Now, it rightly refers to a registered office here, and that was one of the recommendations made by the report. That wasn't carried through- made by the report, that wasn't carried through into the nineteen seventy-six Act, but that did include provision that in its application, the, uh, operator should give details of where it intended to contract business, and many authorities do in fact have conditions requiring business to be contracted from this particular basis, just a different way, way of doing it. But this is what is envisaged by the scheme.
Well, it's what's envisaged by the authors of the report, but it's not good enough to say that. You've got to point to some language in the statute that shows that Parliament decided to accept that model, and at the moment I'm struggling to see where that language is.
Yes, well, my lady, we, we will submit that when one looks later in the report, it deals in terms with, with what becomes fifty-six-one and gives a reason for it.
The other problem is there seems to be just a lack of thought, because they're after many goes in many different courts, after the Supreme Court in an employment case, after the divisional court in London, second go here for outside London, and we're gradually beginning to see differences between a booking and a contract. We know that we don't want people to flag down things on the street unless they're, um, got a taxi driver's licence, and we distinguish, for instance, why between that and somebody's got a private hire vehicle licence. It's very hard to say that these things that were emerged in the London report have found themselves into the Act, but even if they have, it's against you, because here they talk about the contract being made at the registered office, and the Act just doesn't even go that far by saying it's got to be only with the, uh, operator and only at the time of making the booking, that's the difficulty. I understand why it might be a good idea if Parliament had said it, but if they haven't said it, and even if, perhaps, they should have said it, if they didn't say it, you're stuck, aren't you?
Well, my lord, the, this paragraph refers to the contract being made with the registered operator.
Yeah.
In fact, I, I accept, of course, it says the office, and we don't have the office in the Act, but that doesn't take away the force from the point, it's still the identity of the contracting party is to be the operator, the additional requirement of the office is not there, but that doesn't take away-
But my point would be, the Act, if it was following this expressly, would have a provision which said, it shall be an offence to, um, enter into a contract or hire, it should be an offence for a driver or, it would have to make provision for saying it's got to be only with the operator and only at the time of booking, and it would be a criminal offence or something else, that's the problem, it just doesn't seem to get carried through.
Oh, my lord, I quite like-
You, you hear my fine maddening, but you say, yes, but I told you already, that's life.
And I thought, of course, yeah, things could have been expressed very differently.
Yeah.
Can I go to, um, chapter nine, please? These are the actual recommendations. And, um, if I could pick it up on page six-hundred-and-thirty, and in paragraph nine-point-five, the committee set out the main features of the proposed scheme, and there are five matters they set out here, which, and I'll take this point out, they say at the end of that, in our view, each of these main features is indispensable. And those five features are firstly, the licensing of the vehicle, secondly, the licensing of the driver, thirdly, the new concept of the operator, anyone who invites and accepts bookings, and I accept it all refers there to operate from registered address, which I said doesn't, um, occur, and then, fourthly, the operator accepts the booking, and we say that is, in fact, what the Act does, it doesn't use that terminology, but it, it's clear that acceptance is part of, of the operator's obligations, and finally, there's a provision here, uh, which wasn't carried through into the Act, which is that the driver should be required at the commencement of a hiring to have with him a form on which the same particulars has been entered as the operator had, and which also incorporates information of the basis on which charges will be calculated, and that the driver is then to give that, uh, document to the hireer. And so I accept that recommendation, and I accept, it says, say, this is indispensable, was not carried through, the committee had not made recommendations about the fixing of fares, it was simply a provision of information about fares, and one gets that, I won't take you to it, but paragraph six-point-thirty. Then paragraph nine-point-six says, we consider whether it was not necessary to licence hire operators that came to the conclusion that it was essential to do so. In the private hire business, the operator and not the driver is the person of whom the, the hireer makes his contract, and it surely why they should be held to have overall responsibility. And we say here that this is within the recommendations, it is not the committee forgetting what it had said in paragraph four of the report about the different models of operation, it is the committee providing that its recommendation is that only the operator will make the contract, and the rationale for that is, we say, is earlier concerns about the rather loose, the, the, the criticism of those operating the agency model. So what is here is a provision that this is the recommendation, it will be the operator who makes the contract, this is, we say, the premise, one of the premises of the new scheme. And one has to understand that with respect before one then goes on to look at paragraphs nine-point-eight and nine-point-nine.
It's a premise of the new scheme, and yet it's not an indispensable feature as per paragraph nine-point-five. Is that right?
It don't, it don't, it's not, um, it's not within paragraph nine-point-five, no.
No, but those are the indispensable features.
Yes, that's right, yes, yes.
And one of those wasn't put into any of the legislation.
Well, we, it, it's, it's, we, we then go to paragraph nine-point-eight, I may, and that deals with the problem that arises in connection with proposed control operators, with that deciding what should be done about a situation where one operator accepts a booking and then arranges for another to ride the vehicle. It goes on saying, that's apparently common practice nowadays, groups of firms have reciprocal arrangements. This has economic advantages and provides the public with useful service, but it may mean the customer should be in some doubt about who provided the car and against whom he should seek any remedy. Basis of charge may be different from that which is led to expect, and the car may even have been provided by someone whose cars he had determined on the strength of previous experience to avoid. Then goes on to say, paragraph nine, we do not want to put a stock useful practice arranging for another operator to provide a car, avoid losing customer. While the operator passes on a booking, ought no longer be able to do so without having to accept full responsibility to standard of service provided. We therefore recommend that the scheme of control should include a provision to effect that where an operator himself undertakes a range for vehicle to be provided, whether by himself or another operator, the hireer's contract is to be deemed to be with the original operator and the fare to be charged on a normal basis. And it is our submission that these paragraphs, nine-point-eight and nine-point-nine, they set out the mischief of which section fifty-six-one is intended to meet, in a context where this recommendation is made on the basis of the committee's prior recommendation, paragraph nine-point-six, that it is to be with the operator that the contract for hire is made. And the, the wording in, what's set out in nine-point-nine, that has, that does have striking similarities with what we see in fifty-six-one. Now, I accept the Act is not well drafted, it could have been far better drafted, but respectfully, once one looks at this report and sees what is said here, it is inescapable that the mischief of which fifty-six-one was intended to meet is this position, operator has accepted a booking, doesn't have a vehicle to meet it, gets another operator, you can do that, it's good for the economy, it's good for you, but the contract stays with you.
Although the recommendation is to do it through the conditions attached to the licence, see paragraph nine-point-three-two. Subparagraph C.
Um, but, well, my lord, no, we, we say that, um, nine-point-nine is itself the recommendation, that that's not just a condition, that is a requirement of the scheme. It is true, it also goes on to say, impossible conditions, this could be a condition, but that would be amplifying it. We don't, we, we, we say that this isn't intended to be the way of doing it. And so that is, we say, the mischief. And i- i- in the face of that, in a context where the appellant's reading of fifty-six-one gives rise to so many difficulties, whilst we accept that fifty-six-one is, does create difficulty, in terms of its wording, it does respectfully what we say it does, it has limited effect, and if we're right on that, then the whole thing falls into place. On acceptance of a booking, the operator is required to enter into a contract, there is protection for the hireer, and fifty-six-one means that you can't avoid that by passing on to a secondary operator, whereas on the appellant's case, fifty-six-one doesn't operate at all in cases where the contract is made with the proprietor, with the operator, and where it's made with the driver, it only applies when the contract of hire happens to arise. So yes, I accept the provisions are not easy, but when one looks at it in that context, we submit there can only be one answer.
But what, which, what's the statutory language that compels the conclusion that there is a requirement to enter into a contract?
Well, there, there is no statutory language, it is the same respectfully approach as the divisional court took in Uber London. I, I, I mean, I, I can't, I know that's unsatisfactory, my lady, but I can't, I, I can't point to statutory language. And then one sees from paragraph nine-point-ten onwards, a large number of recommendations as to what the scheme should include, and the vast majority of this can be traced directly to the nineteen seventy-six Act. So nine-point-eleven is, is vehicles, one can trace virtually all those recommendations, similarly for drivers in nine-point-nineteen to nine-point-two-seven, and also operators from nine-point-two-eight onwards. It is right, in fact, I can just turn up operators to show those elements which have not been brought in. And so operators start at paragraph nine-point-two-eight. The first requirement there is that anyone who invites and accepts a booking should be licensed, that is section, in effect, section forty-six-one D, that's the criminalising section.
Except that's not been followed through in section eighty in the definition of operator, because it's who makes provision for the acceptance. That's the problem, they put it one stage back and regulated the business.
My, my, my lord, but as we submitted, and as the judge held below, which has no appeal, acceptance is included within.
Can you just remind me of the paragraph again? You did tell us.
A number of paragraphs, in fact, my lord.
It was sixty-five-two, you mean?
Yeah. Paragraph seventy-three, my lord.
If, and I'm not saying this about the judge, but if for the grits and respect to the judge, in fact, her analysis of the statute is wrong, and even if there's no appeal, we, we had this the other week, what do we do? We say, we don't think the statute is right, but there's no appeal, so we proceed, and the interpretation is right, but we proceed on our basis. If we think the statute really does mean something different, even if there's not technically been an appeal or a respondents notice, we can't allow that interpretation of the statute to stand, can we?
Lord, my lord, there's elements within that, um, there's no ground, there's no permitted appeal about the admissibility or the effect or the use of Maxwell Stamp, similarly not about the nineteen ninety-eight Act. However, Law Justice Phillips, in his follow-up email, rather, the paper for the court, did agree with Capital's law's view about it, and so we, we said the central issue here is whether there's a requirement to enter into a contract, and that requires the court to construe fifty-six-one.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's the issue principally.
It's more than that, it's a requirement to enter the contract.
Yes.
And only with the operator and at the time of booking.
Well, fo- following booking, yes.
Of, yes, well, I mean-
Following acceptance, yes.
Following acceptance, yes. But I mean, all of those things for your arguments to work have got to be implied into the Act. That the contract is made with the operator and only the operator, and when acceptance is made, and acceptance has got to be in part of booking.
In terms of whether the contract is, is contemplated with the operator, we say that one can see indicia of that within the Act, the way in which it talks about a private hire booking, vehicle supplied with the driver, fifty-six-three obligation, you're to keep a record of all the vehicles and drivers, these are all indications that it's to be the operator.
Of control of the actions, yes.
Yes, I accept, however, that when it comes to the requirement, one has to look outside the terms of the Act to the same analysis.
Public safety.
Yeah. And then paragraph nine-point-two-nine, there are three requirements here, each of these were brought in by the Act. A is section fifty-seven-two-B Roman-two, B is fifty-seven-two-B, and C is fifty-seven-two-C, and I think the only matters which are not is under paragraph nine-point-three-one, it provides for the licence to be renewable three years, whereas under nineteen seventy-six Act it's five years, and then nine-point-three-two refers to reasonable to act all the following conditions, whereas what the Act does is it simply empowers the authority to impose conditions. But those are the only matters that have not been brought in, and similarly so with all of the other, the, the driver and the vehicle.
If, um, if you're right in saying that the contract for hire is made when the booking is accepted, and the contract is made between the operator and the hireer, not the driver.
Yes.
What authority does the driver have, as contemplated by nine-thirty-two-E, to vary the contract, so as to change the destination or the route or whatever? Does, does he have some sort of implied agency from the operator to do that?
Well, that, well, I mean, that, that would be a matter for the operator and the driver.
Well, how does he know? Driver's in the vehicle, and the passenger says, no, I've changed my mind about going to the station, I want to go somewhere else.
Yeah.
What authority does the driver have to say, all right, I won't take you to the station?
Well, that would, that would be a matter for the agreement between the driver and the operator.
So the driver's got to re-up the operator and say, passenger doesn't want to go to the station after all, she wants to go somewhere else, can I take her there?
My lord, not necessarily, I mean, again, this is statute perspective, it is operated in the, in the real world, and, you know, people changing their minds as to where they want to go is, is a fact of life.
Well, that's absolutely true, but if you're talking about contract, which you are.
Yes.
Then the only people who can vary a contract are parties to it.
Yes, but all, all of them.
And if the driver is not a party to the contract, I don't see what, at the moment, see what authority he has from the only party to the contract, in your analysis, the operator, to change the route or destination.
Oh, but the, the terms of the engagement of the, the driver could easily make provision for that, giving them authority to change the route.
Yeah, all right.
I think that's all I wanted to take from Maxwell's stamp.
I wonder if there are different types of contracts, he says, in the world at large. Is there a contract, is there a, a contract for a booking and a contract for a journey? I ring up a customer cab, and I say, I want a car at nine o'clock, I'm going to the station, and that's a contract, and it's made with the operator. There's a contract for the provision of a private hire vehicle.
Well, well, certainly the way in which-
The car turns up at nine o'clock, and I say to him, oh, I know I booked, I had this booking, but the journey I want to carry out is a different journey, but that, is that accepting a booking for a different journey, and the driver can't do that under the Act?
We, we would say that, um, that's easily to be dealt with between the operator and the driver, permitting them to take a different journey.
So I, car turns up and I say, actually, I don't want to go to Sainsbury's, I've gone off there and I'm going to Tesco.
Yeah, yeah.
They say, they ring up and say, it's okay to take it to Tesco, it's closer and cheaper, but.
It doesn't, well, it doesn't, may, may not ring up, it may, it may just be by virtue of the, the terms under which the driver engaged with the operator.
So there is freedom of contract to some extent. So there is freedom of contract to some extent?
Yes, when it doesn't, well, there is between the operator and the driver, when it doesn't impinge upon the public safety of the hireer. I think now, if I may, turn to the amendments to the Act by sections 55A and B. And this is page 113 of the Authority's bundle. Just one point I've been reminded by Mr. Canna. Yes, my lord, the final point of Maxwell Stamp, I won't take you back to it, is that when one looks at the express recommendations, the summary recommendations, the page references is page 658. And one of the express recommendations is number 57, that the scheme of control should include a provisional effect that where an operator himself undertakes to arrange for the provision of the vehicle, the deeming point. So that's to deal with the point put to me by the report's authors, considered it to be dealt with by a condition. We said that's not right. And point 57 on page 658 reinforces that point. Onto section 55A. And this section does extend the ability of an operator to request or arrange for another person to provide a PHV character booking is accepted. But what we say is relevant is that subsection 1A is a restatement of the law in terms of what had always been permitted under the Act. And subsection two, insofar as it applies to subsection A, 1A is also a restatement. So subsection two provides its immaterial for the purpose of subsection one, whether or not subcontracting is permitted by the contract between the person licensed under section 55 who accepted the booking and the person who made the booking. And the wording of that is important because that provides, that refers to the contract with the person licensed under section 55 who accepted the booking. It doesn't refer to a contract which an operator may be deemed to be a party by virtue of section 55, 56.1, or may not if they're made as a principle. So what it is doing is recognizing, good, under the Act as made, the ability of the first operator to request the second operator to provide a vehicle was a general provision. And that, and so there's no limitation on it. 55.1A makes that right express, and we've referred to the explanatory notes.
Yeah.
The 55.2 applies to all four subsections of A to D. And we say that as far as 1A, it's a restatement of the law as to what always could be done. And it refers to the contract. And that is, we say, a recognition that under the Act as enacted, the contract is between the operator and the hireer and no one else. And therefore, that makes express or clearer what is not clear in the Act as enacted. And we say, even if we're wrong on that, nonetheless, it takes effect as a declaratory enactment, in effect, changing the law. We've given you a part of venue for that.
Yeah.
And I think in terms of the source of the requirement for there to be a contract, this is, this is the high point of our case.
Section 55A too.
Yes, it has to be, yes. In terms of, so this is recognizing, part of recognizing that the contract under the 76 Act is made with the operator.
But is there another way of reading it, which is just that Paul wants making it clear that if there is such a contract and it forbids subcontracting, that's immaterial?
With respect, we'd say no, my lady. That's not what it is.
Why?
Because its plain meaning is referring to the person who accepted the booking and the person who made the booking. It is talking about an actual contract, not a contract to which the operator may be deemed to be a party by section 56.1. And it's difficult to see how one would be concerning oneself with issues about subcontracting in 55.
No, it's obviously talking about an actual contract. That's, perhaps I haven't made my point clear. Could it be read as simply saying that if there is a contract and that contract forbids subcontracting, that's immaterial?
Well, my lady, we respectfully suggest not, because it doesn't, it refers to the contract in terms that there must be a contract.
Can I just follow this one through? I ring up Delta to book a car, and Delta passes a request on to Epsilon.
Do they accept the booking first?
They arrange for Epsilon to provide the vehicle. Because they have accepted it, they accept the booking.
Yeah, they accept the booking, yes.
And they arrange for Epsilon to provide the vehicle.
Yes.
Epsilon's driver turns up.
Yes.
Do I have any contract with Epsilon at all? By getting the car and driven somewhere?
Not, not, not based on this, on section 55A2.
On anything?
Not, no, because of 56.1 you wouldn't. 56.1 would say that in that scenario, on our analysis, your contract stays with Delta.
Yes, but do I have, does Epsilon have any liability to me in contract when I get into the Epsilon car and say, I want to go to the station? None at all?
No. That logically follows from the provisions.
Well, that's hardly conducive to public safety, is it?
Well, it is, because it means that the first operator who continues to bear the responsibility. Well firstly, the second operator has relative responsibility because they still have to comply with pieces two and three.
But no contractual.
No, but it means that the first operator has to be sure that the person to whom they are passing their bookings is a good operator because their contractual responsibility will remain.
Yeah.
So it does, we say, uphold public safety.
That's not right. It's the reverse. It's not, I mean, they're not going to be criminally liable under 55B3 unless they actually knew. They can, they need to know if they're going to be criminally liable.
Yeah, 55B is criminally liable, but 55A with under 56.1, the fact still is that in any of these scenarios under 55A1, where the first operator provides, gets another operator to deal with it, section 56.1 still applies. So in all those scenarios, the contract for hire remains with the first operator.
But the criminal liability transfers.
Depending on the, depending on the term of 55B, yes. All right. May I then turn to the 1998 Act, please?
Yes.
Page 179. And this Act, unsurprisingly, has the same purpose of public safety. And it has the same four interlocking elements that I indicated earlier on. And it provides for the same trinity of licences. The definition of private hire vehicle is in section 11. And it provides, private hire vehicle means a vehicle constructed or adapted to seat fewer than nine passengers, which is a made available with a driver for hire for the purpose of carrying passengers other than licensed taxi or a public service vehicle. And we say there is no material difference between this definition and the definition of GHV under the 1976 Act, i.e. a vehicle that is provided for hire with the services of a driver. And nor is there any material difference between the wording made available for hire in this definition and the wording in the 76 Act of provided for hire.
There is a difference for operator and operate.
Well, yes, we'll go on to that now. First thing is that there is an express definition of operator in this Act, whereas there is not in the 1976 Act. But that doesn't actually lead to any material difference because the operator is defined by reference to the definition of operate. The difference there is in the definition of operate is twofold. Firstly, there is now an express reference to acceptance. But we say that's just making clear what was any implicit. And there is no reference here to in the course of business. Because what the Act has done, it's done it in a different way here. It has introduced the concept of the operating centre in section 1.5, meaning premises of which private hire bookings are accepted by an operator and requires bookings under 1998 Act to be accepted at that centre. So again, we say that in each case, the Acts are dealing with bookings made in the course of business. One uses that language specifically. The other talks about the operating centre, but both of them involve concepts of hire.
Wouldn't the driver be liable here? Because even if he doesn't make provision for the invitation or acceptance of private hire bookings, in this scenario, if he actually accepts a private hire booking, if there was an agency model whereby the driver agreed to provide the transport, he would have been an operator, he would, because he accepted a private hire booking. And then he would be liable. Would he forward an equivalent offence to what was set up?
My lord, no, because I think there is this, there is a decision, acceptance of the booking and then the contract that arises. And I think it's, it's common ground that booking can only be accepted under each Act by the operator.
Yes, but what I'm saying is the driver would be an operator if he tried to accept private hire.
Oh, yeah, yes, if, yeah, if the driver tried to accept, yes.
So if the contract was, the driver would make a, if it's a dual contract, both the driver and a deemed contract, the driver, if it's something equivalent to 46.1E, I think it was, in this Act, will it be liable for an offence? And that would be a more powerful reason for driving it, as Lord Leggett said in Uber, towards it being the operator only. Did you follow my line of thought?
Well, my lord, I hope so, but I think that the I don't think there's any question but that the acceptance is, but I don't think that it is possible. It's certainly never been the case that the driver would accept a booking. If they did, then they would be operating.
Yes.
And so the booking must be accepted by the operator to avoid that under both Acts.
But hold on, that's clearly expressed under this Act.
Yes.
The 1998 Act.
Yes.
Because if a driver purports to accept a booking, he's acting as an operator.
Yes.
And therefore, if there's something equivalent to 46, he's going to be liable for criminal offence. However, if we talk about criminal liability, you normally construe statutes very strictly indeed. And what Reto was called, and it's clear from the words, is operate is defined more narrowly as in the course of the business, making provision for the acceptance or invitation of offer. And therefore, a driver may not be liable there, even if there is a contract under which he is the one who accepts.
Is this under 1976 Act?
Yes.
Yes, well, we respectfully say no, because it's implicit in the definition of operate on the 1976 Act that it includes acceptance. One sees the references in 56.2 and 56.3, and indeed 55A1 and 2. Only the operator can accept the booking. The position is the same. The, if one turns the page on to page 180, and there is a definition of private hire booking, subsection 1.4, means a booking for the hire of a private vehicle for the purpose of carrying honourable passengers, including a booking to carry out a subcontractor, a private hire booking accepted by another operator. The 1976 Act does not define private hire booking in terms, but essentially, again, it's the same because of the definition of operate, which refers to the acceptance of booking for a private hire vehicle, hire vehicle provided for hire with the services of the driver. And so we say they are the same. In terms of the provisions concerning operators, section two, that replicates section 46.1D of the 1976 Act. And section three, which sets out a number of provisions in relation to operators, is also the same, save for the new requirement in subsection two and six to state the address of premises which they propose to use in the operating centre. There is still the ability on 76 Act to give that information, but under the 98 Act, there are greater obligations. And then if one goes to section four on page 183, this has similar obligations owed by the London PHV operator. And one sees section 4.3D is a requirement to keep at each specified operating centre such record as may be prescribed of particulars of the private hire vehicles and drivers which are available to him for carrying out bookings accepted by him at that centre. And that is a similar obligation to section 56.3 of the Act, albeit there is no reference to the centre. And as we'll see in a few moments, it was this particular provision that was relied upon by the Divisional Court as part of its reasoning as to why there is a contract with the operator, i.e. they are the person who has the vehicles and the drivers available to him or available for carrying out bookings. And then section five is a similar provision to section 55A1. And it also enables a London PHV operator who's accepted a booking to arrange for another operator to carry out that as subcontractor, although this is expressed in a negative rather than permissive. And it sets out three scenarios. A within London, B outside London, and B is where the other operator is licensed under section 55 and the subcontractor booking is accepted in that district. Again, point about acceptance of booking. And then subsection four provides it's immaterial the purpose of subsection one, whether or not subcontracting is permitted by the contract between the first operator and the person who made the booking. Again, we say that is similar in form to section 55A2. And then subsection five is, for the avoidance of doubt and subject to any relevant contract terms, a contract of hire between a person who made a private hire booking at an operating centre in London and the London PHV operator accepted the booking remains in force despite the making of arrangements by that operator for another contractor to provide a vehicle to carry out that booking as subcontractor. And our submission is that this is effectively also a deeming provision in similar form to section 55, 56.1. It uses different language. It refers to for the avoidance of doubt. And it is true that it also includes a potential carve-out for relevant contractual terms. But in the absence of those terms, its effect, in effect, is to deem the contract of hire with the first operator, notwithstanding the use of these provisions to find another operator to provide the booking. And although the wording is, the word to doubt is not what we have in our, in our, in effect, that's what 56.1 is driving. The Act is predicated on the contracting with the operator, required to have it. But if you choose to use a second operator because of this permission, nonetheless, the contract's going to be for the avoidance of doubt. And that's really how the provisions operate. Can I then go to the Divisional Court's decision in ULL, please? It's page 359. And this arose obviously because of the over comments of the Supreme Court in Aslan and ULL wanting to understand precisely what the law required and therefore brought Part Eight proceedings. And therefore brought part eight proceedings, seeking a declaration that under the nineteen ninety eight Act. A contract was not required to be entered into by the operator. And it was supported in that by another operator, Free Now. Who had been granted a licence by TFL. And the grant of that licence was challenged by way of judicial review by the United Trade Action Group. One element of their judicial review being that, in fact, Free Now's model was not in compliance with the nineteen ninety eight Act. It didn't do what the Supreme Court Ober Ta had said it should do. And if one goes to paragraph twenty three, please. That reproduces Lord Leggett's, parts of Lord Leggett's speech in Aslan. And in particular, paragraph forty seven, I'll put to page three six seven. Where he says Uber maintains the acceptance of private hire bookings. By a licensed London PHV operator acting as agent for drivers to comply with the regulatory regime. I'm not convinced by this. References in the Private Hire Vehicles Act, acceptance of a private hire booking. As reasonably understood code acceptance personally, and not merely for someone else. Of a contractual obligation to carry out the booking and provide the vehicle for the purpose. And then just between B and C, this suggests that only contractual arrangement compatible with licensing regime. Is one whereby Uber London as the licensed operator accepts private hire bookings as principal only. And then enters into a contract of transportation. And it's also recorded there that counsel for Uber, paragraph forty eight, sought to resist that interpretation. By reference to long, long established industry practice. So that was the context for the litigation in ULL. The submissions for the parties are summarised in paragraph twenty four and twenty five. And paragraph twenty four, just above D, recording the submission for Uber London. Being that the nineteen ninety eight Act does not seek to regulate any private law relationships which may arise. Between those engaged in providing and using private hire vehicles, saving relations to subcontracting. Its provisions are regulatory in nature and do not require any particular contractual relationship.
It sounds as though you were submitting the opposite in that case.
Absolutely, yes, yes, yes. And
So your, your client has done a reverse, has reversed the position.
Three point.
Oh, no, I mean, I mean, my, my client, like many operators, guided by the regulator, TFL. Was satisfied that his model of operation was consistent with the nineteen ninety eight Act. Because of the comments made by the Supreme Court in Aslan. It entirely properly took the view that neither to have that issue determined.
Gracefully admitted defeat at the hands of the divisional court.
Yeah, and well, submissions were made and rejected. And then my client, again, took the view, well, the Acts are the same, it changes his model outside London.
No, I understand that.
And then justice E records the submission then made, the references to the nineteen ninety eight Act to acceptance of a booking. Refer only to acceptance of the regulatory responsibilities. And then paragraph twenty five summarizes submitted for Free Now. And their submission was that there's a distinction between acceptance of a booking. Which is what the operator is required by the Act to do. And the undertaking of obligation to carry out the journey, which is what the driver does. Acceptance of an obligation to carry out the journey by the operator is unnecessary to ensure public safety. Which is ensured by the fact that regular obligations are also imposed on the driver and the vehicle. But that summarizes those submissions, and they were not accepted by the divisional court. And if one goes to paragraph twenty eight. Lord Justice Bell says, in our judgment, the nineteen ninety eight Act plainly contemplates the acceptance of a booking by the operator would create a contract between the operator and the passenger. And furthermore, that that will be a contract by which the operator undertakes an obligation as principle to provide the transportation service. That is what is meant by private hire booking. The language of section four. Private hire vehicles and drivers which are available to him for carrying out a booking accepted by him. Indicates is the operator which carries out the booking, i.e. performs the contractual obligation to convey the passenger. And that it does, does, does so by means of licensed vehicles and drivers available to it.
I don't think the seventy six Act has this, this phrase carries out the booking, does it?
It doesn't have the identical phrase, but it has a similar phrase. It talks about the vehicle available to him. And it's the booking of a hire for the purpose of carrying honourable passengers.
So, so what's the section in the, in the Act? Doesn't catch which section you were referring to. Is that the definition of operator?
Yes.
Well, that's the obligations, section, section four.
Yeah.
And that's fifty six two, isn't it?
Yes. And it's also the section eighty definition of vehicle provider for hire.
Four is different, actually, some of fifty six two, the recording one, but some of it is different, isn't it? Is there an equivalent to four two? Oh, it's forty six one E, I think, is it?
Oh, yes, I'm a bit lost in my provisions there. Yeah, it's, I think it's, I think four three D is effectively fifty six three.
And four two is forty six one E, I think, is it?
Yes, I think it, uh.
And that's the one that's got the phrase carrying out a private hire booking. And that's what's not in the nineteen seventy six Act.
Well, what it has in the nineteen seventy six Act is the, the operator's definition. Is to make provision of of bookings for a vehicle provided for hire with the services of the driver. That's the point. Then the court finds further support for its conclusions by section section five, and in particular, section five four. Which provided that it's immaterial for purposes of subsection one. Whether or not subcommitting is permitted by the contract between the first operator and the person who made the booking. The court there considered, well, that must mean there is a contract with the first operator. Because otherwise, this would only apply to subset of cases, i.e. where the driver accepted. That was, the contract was with the driver. And as it says there, just low H, thus the contract between the operator and the passenger. Is a contract for the hire of a vehicle to undertake a journey. Mr Bose and Mr Colvin were driven to submit, the section five applies where there is such a contract between the operator and the passenger. Through subcontracting is permitted, but the nineteen ninety eight Act permits an operator to accept a booking without creating such a contract. In the latter case, however, there is no scope for the operator to arrange for another operator to provide a vehicle to carry out the booking. They were unable, therefore, however, to suggest any reason why Parliament should wish to legislate for only a subset of the ways in which an operator may offer his services to passengers. We see none. And we say that section five four is similar to fifty five two A, A two on. And then paragraph thirty, the court goes on to consider, even if the Act contemplates, does it require? And I've already taken the court to that, and I continue to rely upon that. And then I accept that paragraph thirty one refers to section fifty six. But as I say, there was no argument on the nineteen seventy six Act. And certainly not on the meaning and effect of section fifty six one. And then finally, the court considered in paragraphs thirty six.
Thirty five, good stuff, the, the consequences, it doesn't seem to say in the judgment that it's only the operator, not having a contractual requirement on the operator is a problem, and therefore, they must have one. But it doesn't say in thirty five and thirty six that it's the only person who can have one, and it can't be the driver as well.
My, my lord, there is, there is nothing, there's no, sorry, there's no hint from the judgments at all. That the contract could be with the driver, the whole sense of it is the contract is with the operator, is required to be with the operator.
And that's partly because they think it's clear that the driver would be liable for accepting a booking.
Well, I think, I think it's more, because section five four refers to the contract between the first operator.
He proposes, yeah.
And we say that similar provision applies here.
Yes.
So that is the nineteen ninety eight Act. And in terms of our submissions, I think I've probably made those already to, to, to my lord and the court. In the course of look to the various provisions, we say in summary that the Simplicity Act is predicated on the basis, the contract will be entered into by the operator's principle. We preen aid certain sections in respect of that. We say that the Act requires that, the same reasons as the High Court held in ULL. And section fifty six one has a far narrower reach than the appellant's say. And doesn't apply as, as they suggest. May I take instructions, please?
Yes.
Sorry, my man, by the way, just turn. Well, I, I think we've made all our points, but it, it does, I reiterate again that our interpretation provides certainty and clarity, our pass public safety, and the appellant's doesn't.
Who's replying first?
By arrangement, it's, it's me.
Yes.
Maybe Mr Gourier, but by request, he's transferred it to me.
The contract between you is immaterial.
Exactly, the contract doesn't come into this at all, between gentlemen. I'm going to be very, very quick. Mr Bose said there'd be serious consequences if I was right in this case. But I think when it came down to it, the, the main consequence that he was claiming was an interregnum that there might be between a booking and a contract. And it's, it's right to say that the Act makes no requirement in relation to timing. And so Mr Bose's argument was an argument about timing, really, not identity. I suppose under Mr Bose's scenario, it might occur that an operator accepts a booking. And that the contract arises later, it might arise at the time, the operator might contract on behalf of the driver, that's a possibility as well. But what happens if the operator accepts a booking and then shuts up for the night? And the, the driver never pitches up, and that contract never materializes. That operator will find themselves in a formal interview with the local authority. Because they've left somebody alone in the middle of the night. The local authority could anticipate that problem. And they could make conditions. And Sefton have, I took you to the conditions. And that said, that when you've accepted, you've, you've got to, got to dispatch, you've got to get somewhere to to get, get the cab to where it's supposed to be at the time it's supposed to be there. Without asking you to turn up yet another document, the very next condition on that sheet also happened to say, and the operator should record the contract before the journey begins. So a local authority that's concerned about the scenario that Mr Bose has described to you has got all the power it needs to make sure that the customer is protected. Can I also say this?
There's no standard form of conditions, is there?
No.
So the problem with your argument is that different rules could apply in different parts of the country.
Absolutely, depending on what is perceived, what the difficulties are, what the industry practice is in that part of the world, and, and so forth.
And the question for us really is, was Parliament's intention to leave it to be settled by conditions from authority area? Authority area, or is it implicit and therefore required that there be a contract at the time of booking?
Absolutely, that is the point. Can I also make the point? That this is private hire, it's a contractual situation, there's an element of consumer choice. So when Lord Justice Lewis calls and says, look, I really need to be in the Court of Appeal at ten thirty. And the operator says, look, I'm, I'm, I'm just a best endeavours service. I'll, I'll, I'll do my best to dispatch. Lord might say, well, sorry, I want, I want to know, I want an actual contract. And if the operator says, well, look, I'm only a best endeavours, I'll do my best. Lord Justice Lewis has got the option to go elsewhere. So there's a little bit of consumer choice in it. But also, I do say, not to the licensing practitioner, that the, the licence is the protection for the customer. Contract provides economic remediation. But the customer's protection in the middle of the night is no much good waiving a contract in the middle of the night. The protection is the licence, I'm dealing with responsible people here, and if they prove to be irresponsible, the consequences are in licensing. Can I say a word about the deregulation Act? Mr Bose spoke about the Act, but didn't really speak about the context. Which is really twofold, the one is that section fifty six had been in play for twenty two years already. So for twenty two years, there had been this deeming. And when the, when the deregulation Act came along, it was intended only to deal with subcontracting. And it was intended to be deregulatory. Clearly wasn't Parliament coming along and saying, oh, everything we've said before doesn't count. The contract's got to be with the operator, and it's got to be at the point of acceptance or just thereafter. It was trying to extend rights, not reduce rights. And it did so in a particular way. What it didn't do was try to qualify or change section fifty six one, it could have done that. But it didn't, fifty six one survived the insertion of section fifty five A and section fifty five A two before it. And it did it in such a way as to ensure that operators were easily able to pass on out of district, into Scotland, or into London. Regardless of what the contract said, if there was a contract, and it, it really did no more than that. And Mr Bose took you to a passage in the London legislation which said, why would Parliament want to legislate for a subset? And I would make exactly the reverse point here, when Parliament passed section fifty six one. Why did it want to legislate for a subset? It specifically says it's legislating for every contract for the purposes of this part of the Act, which is the whole of the private hire regime. And then finally, Mr Bose wanted to convince you that the use of for the avoidance of doubt in section five five of the nineteen ninety eight Act is to the same effect as the deeming provision in the nineteen seventy six Act. That's clearly not so with respect, for the avoidance of doubt means this is the situation. And we, Parliament, are just setting it out for the avoidance of doubt. and we, Parliament, are just setting it out for the avoidance of doubt. Whereas a deeming provision is, this is not the situation, but we're deeming it to be so in order to achieve the end.
I mean, deeming provisions take different forms. And some of them may turn fiction into fact, as it were.
Exactly.
And others may say, well, whether or not the fiction is the fact...
Exactly. And there may be a bit of both in section fifty-six, because in some cases, the fiction is a fact, where the operator's contracted. But you can see what Parliament did. Rather than taking a small watercolorer's brush, it took a big roller and said, for every purpose that the contractual responsibility lies with the operator. And at the end of it, one can do all the comparisons one wants with the nineteen ninety-eight Act, but what falls to be construed in this case is the nineteen seventy-six Act. And that's where I rested. There's my submissions, thank you.
Well, only this. The court is being asked to give a purpose of construction to the nineteen seventy-six Act when no language capable of bearing that construction has been identified. In Uber London, Lord Justice Miles did identify a language that he found was capable of bearing the construction he came to. And he identified that language in paragraphs twenty-eight and twenty-nine. There's not much of it, but that's the linguistic basis on which he came to the conclusions he did. None of the language he referred to is to be found in the nineteen seventy-six Act. There may be what may be called equivalence of it here and there, but certainly not everywhere. But even if those equivalent passages are strung together, they do not form language capable of bearing the construction that leads to the declaration under consideration today. And that's it.
Well, thank you all very much. It will not surprise you to learn that we will reserve our decision. You will get draft judgments in the usual way. They come subject to a fierce embargo, which means what it says. And so there is only limited distribution of the draft, and only for the purpose of correcting typographical errors and other small factual errors, not for rearguing the case or taking new points. We would hope that, in the light of the draft judgments, you will be able to agree an order disposing of the appeal. But if you can't agree a form of order, please make short submissions in writing, and we will deal with the matter on papers. In due course, the judgment will be handed down remotely, sent to the distribution list by email and released through our short archives. Thank you very, very much.